Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 11th Eugene City Council Work Session. I welcome everybody here and everyone home. And the first item up for us is the committee reports and items of interest from the mayor, city council, and city manager. And I'll start out by just expressing my -- there may be many people in the room who participated, I don't know, but just in general to the public, my appreciation for the amazing turnout for the Race for the Cure. And I think they had like a 7,000 people who participated in the rain. It was great. Thank you all very, very much. And then I wanted to call -- bring your attention, this is something that the City of Eugene and the Financial Planning Association are doing together, and it's a national effort. It's called Eugene Financial Planning Day. And it's on Saturday, October 23rd, from 10 to 4 at the Sheldon Community Center. It's a -- you know, in these hard times, trying to put forward an effort where the people can get some free financial planning advice, no strings attached, no cards passed, nobody being hit up for anything, just trying to be helpful to people who are struggling and need some extra advice. Been very successful in other places, and we wanted to do it here. And so I want to let you guys know and encourage you to encourage others to, especially you guys at the United Way area and so forth, you might want -- encourage people to participate. You can sign up online, and I think they've got like 50 or so people signed up now. I think there's probably going to be some people who know more about Sheldon, with a couple hundred capacity, I think, probably. I did a pitch for it on KUGN this morning. We hope that we're able to help a lot of people. Um, I wanted to let you know I'm not going to be at the MPC meeting this week because I'm going to be co-chairing the League of Minority Voters State of Civil Rights Luncheon at the university on Thursday at noon. And so that's what I'm going to be participating in. And then on Friday, I'm joining up with Otto Patish's daughter, whose official position for the Obama administration is like housing or something along that line. And I'm doing a panel with her and a councilperson from Corvallis on the interesting topic of -- because it's also they're going to have a big conference for architects in town at the same time, and they're going to be participating in this. And so the topic of our panel is placemaking and parochialism, the conundrum of mid-sized communities. Could be interesting. With that, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say that this Saturday before last, on the second, was the annual Willamette River cleanup, and wanted to say thank you to REI and to John Brown, who annually works very hard to help organize that, along with a number of other people from the community. I wasn't able to participate this year as I always do, but wanted to say thank you for all their efforts to help clean up the river that runs through our community. On Monday, on the fourth here this last week, Andrea and I attended the ODOT's Beltline Steering Committee meeting for the Beltline planning, for revamping it between Coburg and River Road. Now, one of the things that they put in front of us were a number of the kind of higher level of policy decisions and policy directions that we're going to begin to take. There were seven items that were considerations about making sure to consider integration with LTD and with alternate modes and with a number of other things in terms of the importance of improving mobility. They presented the Stakeholders Advisory Committee's report, which put forward the recommendation to take a couple of the options off of the table at kind of each end of the spectrum of potential fixes, as well as adding to the policy direction the importance of, excuse me, recognizing the importance of safety considerations and safety improvements. I think, and I think Andrea and I both mentioned at the time, that this is something that maybe is now time for the council to get an update on some of the detailed level of discussions from staff better than I'm able to do at the table. So I'll put forward a poll on having a work session to kind of update us on where ODOT is with that. But they're looking at the pieces that they're going to put forward to the NEPA process, which is the next step. So that's what I have. Thank you.
George?
Just a few things. On the 30th, I met with the recruiters that are going through the selection process for the 4J replacement for George Russell. Spent an hour with two, with three other people from the community answering their questions, so it was kind of an interesting process. I gave them a quick, easy answer, but they didn't, you know, they said, "What are you looking for?" I said, "Well, go out and find another George Russell." So anyway. Later that night, met with the Sandy Drive folks, great turnout. Eric Johnson from Public Works was there, gave an explanation of the difference between overlays and rebuilding, and had some questions from the people about assessments, and went through and explained the difference that this is not an assessment, you know, local improvement district, and went through some of the proposed changes of the assessment policy. And they had a lot of questions, we gave them some answers. It looks promising that perhaps next year we'll get Sandy Drive repaved. I expect they will be contacting the Budget Committee, make sure that occurs. And then on the 5th, I attended the Emerald Awards, put on by the Eugene Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations to all the winners, I'm not going to try to name them all. On the 7th, I met with Roger Gray from E-Web. I guess we've all had our opportunity to meet him, and he's come up with some interesting proposals, had a real nice discussion. And then Wednesday, this coming Wednesday night, at the Gardenway Church at 231 North Gardenway, the Harlem Neighborhood Association is sponsoring a county commissioners candidate forum, in my understanding that it's for the Springfield Commissioner's seat. So that's from 7 to 9. Again, it's at the Gardenway Church at 231 North Gardenway on Wednesday evening.
Jennifer?
Thank you, I just had one thing, and I really appreciate when we receive in our council packets, the list of commendations that the Eugene Police Department receives during the course of the month. And again, it's consistently been in the 30s, the number of commendations that they receive. And I just really appreciate the citizens who have a good experience with our police for taking the time to write in and tell of their experience and share that, and help us to continue to improve our relationship between the police department and the citizens. That's it.
George?
That's dramatic.
Okay. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a couple things. I just wanted to add on to what Mike was saying. I just want to make sure that the community understands that we are discussing the River Road Beltline to Delta discussion, our request. This is one of our priorities. We feel that it's an unsafe road. This isn't about expanding or looking to try and make it bigger, better, faster. The bridge basically is safe, is my understanding, it's not, it's not failed, is in their terms. And so this is a push from us. So if I don't know if the community out there has any questions, please contact me or Mike, we'd be glad to chat with you about it. We are really concerned about the safety of the people that travel on Beltline because it's very used. And what was brought up, I think, at the meeting that we had, was the concern for emergency vehicles being able to get to the hospital now that it's over at the end of Beltline. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, people, you know, we have our own thoughts too on what's important. I attended the Neighborhood Summit with the mayor, and Betty was there, and Alan was there, and I saw George there for a minute, I think.
Yep.
Okay, okay. And that was pretty interesting. That was a good turnout, there was a lot of good people, got to visit with people that I didn't know. The other thing I wanted to share was that I was walking down the street, minding my own business, and one of the officers asked me if I was going to go to a party, the party. And I said, "Well, what party are you talking about?" And he goes, "Well, the mayor and the councilors are all coming." And I, and I like, excuse me, and I thought, "Oh, what did I miss?" And then I got, "What did staff miss?" And so then I said, "Oh, sure, I'll be there." And so they told me to be at City Hall at 1:00. So I came to City Hall at 1:00, and they were honoring Randy Ellis, the officer for downtown, for 40 years of service. And I was, I basically crashed the party, but I was very glad to have been there. I spoke on behalf of workers at the emergency room and the ER, is our connection with them, and how much we depend on our police department to help support us when we're having difficult times. So I hope that we're going to acknowledge him at some point, Mayor, because I really think it's important. Forty years of service is amazing. And the last thing I want to say is, I think the 16th of October is Safety Town at Sheldon?
Saturday.
Saturday. So that'll be for kids. I don't really have the, this, all the information on it, but I'm sure if you went on the city website, you could find it.
Alan?
Yeah, I guess Randy Ellis was first started when Ronald Reagan was president, so it's quite a long time ago, 1980. I also did the Neighborhood Summit, that was on Saturday, great turnout, good summit. I think some good information was traded among the different leaders of the neighborhoods, and I thought it accomplished its purpose in doing that. And I think that's something that we should think about how to do more of, because one of the constant themes I got out of that was the cross-fertilization of neighborhoods talking to each other about what they're doing in their neighborhoods was really important and valuable to them in order to find out what was going on, and swapping good ideas. So I thought that was really good. I met with the folks from Peace Health about their plans on redoing the university campus, and how they're going to take those 1940s buildings and demolish them and rebuild them while there's an operating hospital there. It's going to be a heck of a challenge, but they seem to be up for it. So it'll be good to see the jobs that come out of that reconstruction. I think it's going to be about 80 something million dollars or so. And they're still going to keep that hospital operating, and then it'll just be an enhanced hospital once they get it done, and it'll be a nicer, nicer place. I also did the community welcome, I actually missed the community walking part with the mayor and others, but I did do the town hall with the mayor and talked about, with community members about, about the students and about, and most in particular, the riot that happened the week before that, and on the Saturday, and where the 400 students were gathered. And some of the things that I would like to look into when, as a partnership with the, with the UVO, to, we've had a riot two of the last three years, and I don't want it to be three of the last four years. So some of the thoughts that I had, more party patrols, and what we can do to enhance that effort, which I think is a good effort by the cops. And then DPS, the Department of Public Safety at UVO, has authority, and they're, and my idea is to expand their authority outside their boundaries for other than, for just minor things like disorderly conduct, minor possession, noise, parties, so that they can have a little bit more authority to deal with that. And so we have more of a presence besides just the Eugene Police Department dealing with it, and the Party Patrol. And then partnership with the UVO. One of the things that came clear to me is that we need more activities, and maybe a partnership between our Parks and Rec Department and the UVO student body to have activities that they can do, especially that weekend before school starts, which is the problematic weekend. The other thing that was startling to me is that President LaRue Viera said when he started, they had $4,000 dedicated to substance abuse, and now they have 84, but that is just a drop in the bucket. So, or we can look at something there, and a tougher code of conduct with the UVO.
Chris?
Thanks. Just a couple of quick things. The Housing Policy Board met week before last and went over their kind of progress report for kind of where they are. They just got done awarding the one grant for money, and they were kind of reviewing some of their sources and some of their planning documents and doing some other stuff. So things are on track for that to continue on. Then the other thing was, I was at the Emerald Awards, which was really not, I wanted to acknowledge all the folks who were recognized, because it really is people who are going above and beyond the call of duty in terms of service to their community. And so I thought it was a very nice event, great crowd was there, and it was really nice to see the folks who are being recognized for their efforts to try to make this a better place, and I thought that was, that was good. That's all I have.
Okay. Betty?
I also was at the Emerald Awards, and there were so many people there that I wasn't even sure who else was there. It was a very nice event. I attended the Neighborhood Summit, as has already been mentioned. I thought it was well organized this year. I do think it should happen on a day that's not as nice outside, though.
Yeah.
The, last night, I went to the Toxic's Right to Know 10 Year Celebration, and it was really great after, I remember when it was just starting, and it's really great to see how successful it's been, and how many people are involved now. And the same day, in the newspaper, there was an article about their weed pulling to avoid toxics along the roadside, or they helped organize that. So it's been a very good thing. I did help distribute brochures for, or flyers for them when they were, when it was on the ballot, and it doesn't seem that long ago, but they've done a lot already. I'm always at the farmer's market, but I noticed that the balcony is closed off. And, and I know some of you think that's good, and I thought it was rather sad that people don't have a place to get out of the rain anymore. And again, I think we need, we need a youth center downtown, and we need places that people can congregate without being out in the weather. I think it's all related to exclusion zones and lots of other things, but people do need, people do have to be someplace. And I think there could have been some other solution other than telling people they can't be there. I know some of the people who are down there to give food to people on Saturday were sympathetic to the people who were, I don't know what their opinion was for sure, but they were sympathetic to the people who were excluded. I suppose you all saw, there've been two letters to the editor lately about, of the register guard, about pedestrians being hit by cars downtown. And I personally know the families of two people who've been hit, who aren't those same people. And I, once again, I'll say I'm concerned about pedestrian safety downtown, about cars turning, even though people have the walk sign, the cars turn into them. I hope we can maybe do something about that. It happens right on this corner, the next corner, and down by the deck, too, that people are in danger when they cross the street on foot. Thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. One, just to echo what Andrea mentioned about the Saturday at Sheldon High School, the EPD's Prevention Convention. And then also, just a thanks to Michael Kinnison and his team, who did a really nice job of putting together the Neighborhood Summit, and thought there was a lot of value that came out of that, so.
I just wanted to, since this was brought up, I do want to clarify that in terms of this portion that's up by Harris Hall of the Free Speech Plaza, not the plaza itself, that the discussion went all last year. It was actually proposed originally by the Saturday Market, at the request of the folks who work at the Saturday Market, and reinforced by, that the real issue was a lot of pretty serious drug dealing going back up under there, where people couldn't see it happening, and a real concern about kids being dealt drugs under there. And so at the request, and ACLU was brought into discussion, and they seemed to feel that was a, did not infringe at all on the Free Speech Plaza. And so at the request of Saturday Market, that was, the Saturday Market now is taking responsibility, although its season's almost over, but they're just blocking off the ends of that small portion up there under the use for the day only. So just to cut, keep it safer. But I want to acknowledge also that I do believe we have a growing issue about homeless folks, and it's serious. And we have a lot of sort of strategies that we're working, but, but the issue's growing at the same time. And so I am talking to city manager about the need to figure out where we are in our, in our intervention activities, and if there's any other options for us, because I think it's only going to get worse with this current, really serious environment out here for people's financial situation. So I don't actually see it mostly as kids, I see it as, as just a lot of people that are out there right now. So we really need to take it into consideration, and I think it's, as I said, it's only going to get to be more serious. I hope we'll spend some real time figuring out how we're going to address that, along with all the other things that we have to address, our tougher every day, including our topic for today. So with that, let's move on to our topic for the day. And that is, nothing, perhaps, I can't even remember which is first or second, but either first or second is library, and the other is parks, as far as things that people love in our community dearly, and treasure, and appreciate. And we are at a, at a time when we're facing a funding gap for maintaining our parks, and that's what we're going to be talking about today. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And as the team comes up, I'll just open with a couple of comments. We seeded this conversation during the budget process, and then Alan asked that we pursue this in the work session, and to really start the conversation, or I should say, continue the conversation in a meaningful way. And in a lot of ways, this conversation is not unlike the discussion of road maintenance that has gone on for many years. We're just talking about a different type of infrastructure, in this case, parks and recreation and city facilities. And so we want to start that conversation off today, get some feedback and some guidance, and then we'll come back. The other thing that probably just to talk about is, we also want to think about the funding of all of these in the context of multiple funding issues that may come up into the future. And so as we think about that, this needs to be coordinated with those, whether they're public safety, human services, parks and rec, or, or any combination of operating in capital kinds of expenses. So with that, I'll turn it over to Johnny. I think you're starting us off, and...
Well, I do have a PowerPoint, so, Mayor, I don't know if you really want to be there.
Move my head out of the way.
I don't typically do PowerPoints, so forgive me, I'm not that good at them.
It's a far so good.
It came on, it came on, so that gets starting, starting out going down the right track. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to come and talk about parks, recreation, and open space funding. You'll hear me say the word PROS a lot, and I think most of you know that's park, recreation, and open space, which gets to be a tongue tire after a while, so I'll be saying PROS an awful lot here. Again, I'm Johnny Medlin, I'm the Director of the Parks and Open Space Division. And at the table with me today is a number of people to help us do this presentation and answer questions. I have Craig Smith to my left, who is the Director of the Recreation Division, Marybeth Perkins to my right, who is the Facilities Division Manager, and Mike Pennwell to the far left, who is the Design and Construction Manager for Facilities. And as John mentioned, we are here today at the request of council to talk about our parks, recreation, and open space system. And what we hope to cover today is in two parts. The first part, we're going to talk about maintaining current PROS services, and I hope we don't whipsaw you too much, because we're going to pass this presentation back and forth a little bit. And then the second part, again, looking at the questions that was asked of us, is talking about the things, future parks, recreation, and open space PROS needs. Where I would like to start, most of you were at the Budget Committee presentation I did, what was it, last May? And I've got a couple slides, and I want to kind of use those again, and then pick up with the message where I left off there. And what we have here is just looking at the general fund park, recreation, and open space assets that was added since 1998. And we have quite a list here. These are new facilities that were put on our list that we have to take care of. Seventeen new neighborhood parks, 10 new future neighborhood park sites that have been land-banked, one new community park, which is Bethel, a new future community park site, the land we've acquired around Santa Clara, a new regional playground, most of you have likely been to River Play, Discovery Village, 180 additional acres to a community park around Golden Gardens, that's land-banked. We have 770 acres of new natural areas, most of that in the ridgeline, two miles of additional trails, one new grass sports field. We reconstructed Amazon Pool to a larger configuration, and we've added a multipurpose room and spa there at Echo Hollow. And this map we put in here to give you an idea of the geographic distribution of these new facilities. So it's, both with the land acquisition and the new facilities, is pretty well spread in all four, all four corners of the city. I'm going to go back to the spring Budget Committee presentation and repeat what my key messages there were. The first one was that we've spent over $53 million to date on PROS capital projects since 1998. That includes money, $25 million from the '98 bond, $27 million from the 2006 bond, and about $15, $16 million of SDC that has come in during that time. Of that money, we still have about $15 million of it in hand, and most of that, by the bond title language, is restricted to new property acquisition. Looking at that add of assets to our system, and then looking at what happened over the last decade, due to that decade of general fund budget constraints, our annual PROS ONM funding has declined to approximately 1998 levels. And what I mean here is that over time, we were granted additional money to take care of some of the assets, but in tight times, that money was taken away. So between the several adds and the several reductions, where we're sitting today is approximately where we were before we ever added the $53 million of assets. A number that you've likely heard, I suspect from Mike, is that in looking at maintaining capital assets, you're usually looking at a 1% to 3% annualized cost to maintain those assets. So if you look at spending $53 million, and say, take it in the middle, 2%, then you're looking at, we have about a, just of these new facilities, and not talking about any of the old facilities, we have about a million dollar obligation that we're not keeping up with. And that leads me to the final key message I had in the Budget Committee presentation, is that even though a lot of our facilities were brought online in the last 10 years, these new ones, we have an extensive system of older assets, and the assets that we've brought on new, as I said then, the new and shiny is starting to wear off, and we're finding that we're having to replace things on our new park assets. And that altogether has put us in a position that our system is beginning to decline, the average condition of the system. One of the analogies that I used at the Budget Committee was the automobile, and took some flack from it there, so I'll just use it again. And I really feel that the analogy is, as a family, we had an automobile, that was our old park system, the assets we've had all along, but the community wanted new and better, so we bought the new assets, we bought the new car. And what we've really done in the last decade is done a great job of putting gas in the car and getting it to go where we needed it to, but we've not done a good job of changing the oil, or checking the transmission fluid, or keeping air in the tires. And as such, our system is declining faster than it needs to. And, you know, take the car analogy to a little more extreme, the best-case scenario is it'll wear out sooner than it's supposed to. The worst-case scenario is it'll leave us standing on the side of the road with our thumb stuck out, hoping for a ride. What we wish to see in our park system, and Rosetta Park is a new park that we just brought online, is a nice, well-designed, well-maintained park. Or a playground. Here's Arrowhead, very well-used, in good maintenance, and an active asset. Or in our trail system, we want to have well-maintained trails within good natural area vistas. Again, with the vista, the prairie area on Tugman Park is an example. Unfortunately, more and more, what we're seeing is infrastructure that is decaying that we're, we're having trouble keeping up with. Things like sidewalks, playground equipment, that while this is still functional, we're not maintaining it, it's actually getting quite shabby. not maintaining it, it's actually getting quite shabby. Here's an example from a while back where a guardrail at University Park, a handrail, had rotted to the point that it came apart. We have a lot of signage or woodwork within the park system that really needs work that we're not able to do much with right now. Even some of the newer facilities, this was at Cal Young Sports Park, where the table was needing some work, but then I think some of the kids got a little bit rambunctious on it, and it changed from a maintenance project to a little bit more of a replacement. Then we have the things that pull away from our planned maintenance. And unfortunately, we have a significant amount of things like tagging. Or sometimes the vandalism gets quite a bit worse, and this is at the old University Park restrooms, but as an example of things that we don't budget for, but we have to take care of once they come, and it's unfortunate frequent, the times we have to deal with this sort of thing. Back to regular maintenance items, this is a section of the Ridgeline Trail, and over the last decade, we have gotten much more focused on our natural area and our trail system, but there's still a lot of areas that we need to structurally improve the trail and improve drainage so that we don't have to deal with situations like this. This would be just a regular maintenance issue. Also, maintenance issue, and Chris, I promise I'll make you that phone call about the Scotch broom that I haven't done yet. We have invases coming into the system that we're having to spend more and more time dealing with because things like the Scotch broom or the ivy, as a monoculture, comes in and takes over everything. In this case, and particularly, probably another place that's very evident, has been Hendrix, where the ivy gets so thick and it strangles the trees, and it will kill mature trees by strangling them out. Of course, while not popular, there's the other aspect that we have to deal with. You mentioned homeless a little bit before. We have an increasing homeless issue within the park system. Now, we do have some people that live within the park system that actually you'd never know they're there, are very respectful and don't bother park patrons and pretty well clean up after themselves. Unfortunately, we also have quite a few that don't. And again, this pulls away from our resources of doing the planned maintenance of the system. And just another example of some of the things we have to clean up. And I'll tell you that it wasn't hard for me to find pictures to bring here, the difficulty for me was finding pictures that weren't over the top to go in front of you or on Here's something that I'm really proud of, John made the analogy to the pavement management system, and just trivia for a moment, 24 years ago, when I was hired by the City of Eugene, I was hired to bring in and start the pavement management system for the City of Eugene. So the system we're currently using, I brought on board 24 years ago. When I moved over to parks, I wanted to do something similar for parks, and it's really interesting, if you do the literature, it's not within the general parks culture across the United States to do a comprehensive rating and condition analysis of parks. It was really surprising. So we, just this year, have gotten to the point where we did our first year of park condition rating and went out and looked and rated most all of our parks. The system, I'd say, is still very much in its infancy, but it's starting to give us -- whoops, technical glitch, me pushing the wrong button. It's starting to give us some information. Looking at our developed parks, the majority of our developed parks are in fair to good condition. Now, we do have some that are in the poor and getting worse, but the message of this slide is most of our system is fair to good. Natural areas, most of the system, again, is fair to good. And I think that that is great news. I love this slide. The purpose of this slide is to, we're going to talk about funding, and is to say that our capital budget and our capital project funding and our annual ONM funding has to go hand in hand. Either one being out of balance gives us trouble. So looking at PROS capital assets, what we're looking at here is just dealing with renovation. We're not talking about capital for new improvements, we'll talk about that a little later, but just dealing with renovation, we feel that our capital backlog of projects that have deteriorated beyond our point of being able to handle them on annual maintenance, for the developed parks is about $9 million, and for the natural areas, about $6 million. Then looking at what our annual capital renovation funds, two components there, one being the reimbursement portion of SDC, that's about 23% of what we get of SDC, can be used for renovation, and the other part would be about $300,000 we get annually out of the capital budget, what we'll call the A6 category, for renovation. So if you look at the backlog versus what we have for annual revenue, I think it's pretty obvious we're not going to catch up, particularly when we go to the next slide and start talking about our annual ONM needs. Now, thinking back, again, the analogy about the pavement management, parks are similar, that if we can maintain them at the right time, then they don't deteriorate so quickly, don't fall into the capital side because we can keep them up with annual maintenance. Looking at our total system, we estimate that in our developed parks, our total need is about $5.5 million. And in our natural area, our need is about $800,000 annually. So you can look at it there, and it, you know, comes up about 6.3 is what our general fund annual need is. Well, how do we deal with this need? On the right-hand side is our resources. What we currently have for developed parks is about $4.2 million. What we have for natural areas is about $300,000. Now, we look at, in meeting the gap, that volunteers can probably give us about $250,000 worth of effort. Now, there's some caveats here, that volunteers often are more interested in doing what they want to do than what we want them to do, and sometimes what they want to do is more on the new improvement capital side than here on the operations side. But as a pledge and a goal, $250,000 a year from volunteers, I believe is a realistic goal to strive for. The other one is $100,000 of grants. Now, typically, our grants that we've been receiving lately have been more on the natural side and more on things having to do with water quality or habitat. But again, putting a pledge or a goal down of $100,000 for grants felt a reasonable thing for us to strive for. But what that leaves is about a $1.5 million gap, general fund gap, in park maintenance needs. And for my presentation today, that $1.5 million number is pretty much the main point and purpose of my being here. This is probably a slide that you'll remember, again, we're following the pavement management analogy, where you have an asset deterioration over time. So when the asset's new, it's in good condition, and as it goes through its life cycle, if you don't actively maintain it, it will decline through the area or the time that you can maintain it and keep it in good condition. It'll go through the time quite quicker that you have to do major rehabilitation, or if you don't do it, then it gets down to the bottom where you have to do replacement. If you remember the previous slide's graphs, I think most of our system is pretty much in this area here. So most of our system, we have the ability to keep it above this line if we have the funding to do so. Unfortunately, right now, I believe that we are sliding in this direction, and again, probably heard when talked about pavement management, that a dollar invested here saves you $5 or more if you let the asset go down into this condition before you have to replace it. So we're in a good position, we're not in crisis, but we're sliding down the hill. So, looking at the consequences of not taking action at this time, as I mentioned, we feel that we are, our system decline is accelerating. We are seeing more dissatisfaction from our users. Recently, we had some emails around the Rose Garden, that was an indication of that, and there's been a few others I could mention. We anticipate that we're going to start seeing decreased revenues as the system starts looking shabbier. People are not that interested in renting. I think Craig will have some more to talk about that. Increased safety concerns. You know, unfortunately, we do have a significant amount of illicit activity within our park system in different places. The best way we've had to deal with the illicit activity is to try to keep the park system in good shape and promote legitimate activity in those locations that pushes the illicit activity out. As we decline and things get shabbier, we feel that the illicit activity will increase and we'll have increased safety concerns from our parks patrons due to that. Of course, if we don't take care of maintenance, during the maintenance period, it's deferred and goes into the capital side, and taken over time, and I'll say the old West University Park is an example, if we lose control of them, then we do have a history of having to close facilities. And I'll pass this over to Craig.
Thank you, Johnny. So to give you the full comprehensive view of the entire PROS system, I need to talk a bit about recreation services, and we'll start with a tour of recreation facilities. We have six primary community centers, Sheldon, Peterson Barn, River House, Campbell, Amazon, and Hilliard Community Center. Hilliard was our newest community center, it was built in 1990, the rest were either built new or repurposed in the late 60s or early 70s. We have three swimming pools, Echo Hollow and Sheldon, again, built in the late 60s, and an Amazon Pool, which was, as Johnny mentioned, reconstructed to a beautiful facility in 2001. We have two facilities, which we call special use. We do not have staff in those facilities, we primarily rent them out or we do satellite programming with them. Washington Park down there was actually the first community center, I believe, in 1946. And then we have five other facilities that we either contract out with or we partnership with the community. Those include the Shelton McMurphy Johnson House, the Trudy Kaufman Senior Center, West Moreland Community Center, which now houses Emerald Valley Boys and Girls Club, Wayne Morris Family Farm, and of course, the beautiful Laurelwood Golf Course, which just celebrated its 80th anniversary last year. So this is Attachment C, and it's in your AIS handout. If I were to use the analogy that Johnny uses about a car, speaking specifically about recreation facilities, I would say since most of them were built in the late 60s, early 70s, we've been driving a VW van for the last 40 years. We've been putting oil in it, we've been changing the tires, and we've been using the facilities as we can to best serve our residents. But to give you a more accurate description of their condition, I'd like to turn this part over to Mike Pinwell from Facilities.
Sure. Well, this slide highlights the condition of our recreation facilities. The Facility Condition Index, to remind you, is the dollar amount of the deficiencies divided by the replacement value of the facility. You can see that most of the facilities are either in fair or good shape. Our target overall across all general fund facilities is 80% good and better. This kind of highlights how we're slipping somewhat on capital in that about, only about a third of these are in good condition or better. And the majority are in fair, unfortunately, only one in poor condition. We're a little bit different situation in facilities in that we feel like we're funded in day-to-day operations and maintenance at a level that allows us to keep pace, but we're falling behind in capital preservation and maintenance. And you can see particularly in the two pools here, there's quite a bit of deferred maintenance or condition deficiencies that need to be addressed to keep these going well, and that'll tie into Craig's message about revenue as well. The worse shape these get in, the harder it is to recover the revenue in these facilities.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Additional resources that haven't been mentioned yet, that certainly need to be mentioned, are the resources we share with the rest of the community, primarily our school districts. In the last decade, we've helped build and maintain and provide services on 10 new sports turf fields. And we also share facilities with the schools, the basketball courts, classrooms, cafeterias, anything we can do to help serve our adult sports leagues or after-school youth programs. We also have tennis courts we share, and of course, they share the pools with us as well. And I find this a really critical part of our overall system to essentially serve those, as many of those residents as we can in the way in which they want to be served, which is getting down to the bottom of the line of this conversation. Also, this discussion is primarily about operation and maintenance of facilities funding. But again, to get a full comprehensive view of the park, recreation, and open space system, I'd like to take a few minutes and talk simply about the program operating budget that we utilize in recreation. This is the dollars that go out to serve our residents. Our FY11 adopted budget is around $9 million. Within that, we pay our, we cover our facility maintenance rate, $2.1 million, which is about 23% of our operating budget. We also have, within recreation, a revenue target, $2.7 million revenue target, which creates essentially a cost recovery of about 31% is our current target. And so for us, it's what I kind of call doing the recreation dance in the sense of we want to be accessible, we want to serve as many people in as many ways as we possibly can. So on one hand, we have low-cost or free services, fun-for-all in the parks, after-school programs, and on the other hand, we need to make revenue. And so we have high-end cost recovery programs, primarily, a good example would be our adult athletic teams, which are in a range of 90, 95%, 100%, 110% cost recovery. So what happens, impacts and consequences for us when we're doing this dance, as both Johnny and Mike have mentioned, to identify the consequences, you're actually talking about the range of services you offer, you're talking about the quality of services you offer, and if your facilities aren't up to standard, then you're probably talking about impacting the revenue, as Mike mentioned with the pools. And even though we're a very comprehensive system, we do a lot here in Eugene, people are pretty happy with what we're doing, we still have current gaps. And we've known these gaps for a long time now, actually, we've known them since I've been working here, and the fact that we have geographic gaps in facilities. If you look at this map, you'll see we kind of have, let's see if I can get the pointer here, we kind of have the, I'm looking at an east-west kind of divide here. We really have no facilities in the Santa Clara area, although we do have River Road, Parks and Recreation District up there, providing services. We have an expanding area out here, and we have Peterson Barn in Echo Hollow out in that area. And then, of course, we have no services in the Willow Creek area, and that's probably not new to most, but the map's helped define that, and I'm actually going to get back to that as we talk about future needs here in a minute.
You'll recall at the first, I said we had talked about existing needs, and then we would shift to the question from the council about future needs. would shift to the question from the council about future needs. So at this point, we're going to shift to the future needs, and I just have a short piece here. We're pulling most of this information about future needs out of the PROS Project and Priority Plan. That was the accompanying document to the PROS plan that was adopted in 2006. In looking at this slide, the PMP Plan, Projects and Priority, established five priorities, and those priorities were basically in five-year increments. So at the time of adoption, the hope was that we would do the Priority 1 projects within the first five years, the Priority 2 projects within the second, 3, the third, 4, the fourth. And since we were looking at a 20-year planning window, everything in Priority 5 were those things that the community didn't want us to lose track of, but weren't really within the planning window, and that kind of explains why the number is so high. And these are both the parks and recreation facilities that are in the plan, and these are the facilities that are new added assets. We've already pulled the renovation projects out of the PROS Project and Priority Plan, and those were a basis of some of the numbers that I gave previously on the renovation backlog.
Okay. So again, our future needs, as identified just minutes ago, we have geographic gaps in services. And to help explain that a little bit, we have some maps here. As you look at this map, each red dot represents a registrant or somebody with an address, it's essentially their address, when they register for one of our programs. This map represents the River House Community Center, which is, let's see, this map represents the River House, which is located city central, pretty much along down by the river. And you can see it draws people mostly from all over town, based on the fact that it has a variety of services it offers. We look at Sheldon Community Center, located out right in this area here, you can see that it's got a strong neighborhood-based community center type of program. Most people who go there are from around that area. You look out at Peterson Barn Community Center, and you'll see very strong neighborhood following of what activities are offered out in Bethel. You'll also see Peterson Barn's located right about in there. We have some attendees from the River Road area, and I, we count that too. Peterson Barn also operates, it's after-school programs up in the schools out in that area, the middle and elementary schools, and that's what's showing up in that area. And then this is Amazon Community Center, which offers a large variety of activities and does draw strongly from all over Eugene, mostly from South Eugene, but again, oops, again, you look at, Amazon's right about here, and it is drawing a lot of people from the Willow Creek area into Amazon for programs. So we know there's geographic gaps, and we know that if you build community centers, they're most attended when they're located, when they're visited by the neighborhoods around them. Based on Eugene counts, we've known this for a long time, but based on Eugene counts, we know that people appreciate our services. And we count a lot of those services, and we know that people vote with their feet as well. So this is our attendance record in the last six years. In 2010, we almost hit the 800,000 attendees per year mark, whereas in 2006, we were about 600,000 attendees per year. So we know the demand for our services increasing, and even is continuing to decrease even the last couple of years in which the financial environment for people was much tougher. So that's about a 15% to 20% increase over time. We're thinking that's probably going to continue. But when we start to count people, we know when we look toward the future, there's a couple of areas we know really jump out at us in our essentially future needs. One, of course, would be our senior services. With the rising number of baby boomers that are retiring, we know that we're going to continue to need services in that area. Just within the last 10 years, the number of attendees attending our senior service program has doubled. We'll probably expect it to double again in the next 10 years. And then we also know that our diverse community, or Eugene itself, is changing. We're increasing the diversity of who we are in Eugene, and it's always a goal within recreation to continue to serve the needs of our diverse populations. Back to you, Johnny.
Okay. In looking at funding options, instead of bringing a number of things to you, we recognize that a lot of the different funding options out there can be used for different purposes, and parks and recreation funding is just one of the needs that is facing the council, one of a list of many. And so instead of bringing you a list and presenting it, what we did is, in your Attachment D in your packet, we pulled out Chapter 5 of the PROS Comprehensive Plan, which we felt did a very good job of talking about, I think it was 18 different funding possibilities, and talking about the pros and cons of those different funding possibilities. So we're going to let that document stand on its own and not go any farther into it today from a staff presentation. So to try to bring this presentation to a close, our task, we feel Eugene citizens have repeatedly told us that their parks and recreation services here in Eugene are essential to their quality of life. We also feel that equity and accessibility of PROS services has repeatedly been stressed to us as a basic community value. So our question then becomes, how are we going to continue to meet those community And at that point, we turn it to the council, and I say, do you have questions? We'll happily answer any that we can.
Thank you very much. When I see this, I'm reminded of how much value we do have out there. And I guess the other thing that I would make a comment on is, not only do we evaluate, but it seems to be increasing in importance and need as the community gets to be more stressed. It's the same story with our library system. If people need access to these kinds of activities in an affordable way, and we're still able to provide that, which makes it important enough in ways, in really significant ways for the community as a whole. The question is, how are we going to, what are we going to do to afford it and keep it up and keep the value? And we've learned those hard lessons with our roads about what happens when you don't. So the task is at hand. I'd like to know, actually, if you could paint a picture a little bit more either today or whenever you want to get it to us, I'd just sort of like to know the cost of the vandalism in the parks, both in terms of impact of people living in the parks and also the impact of destruction of facilities and things of that sort. I'd like to know.
We'll need to work on that for you.
Okay. And then, you know, there's a whole public safety aspect to this as well. I've heard from some of your parks workers about some of their experiences out there that they'd like some help with, so any ideas you have around that, I would be really interested in them. And I'm very interested in your park rating, having a look at that too, to see what's going on out there. So, that.
Oh, am I the first in the queue? How'd that happen? Are you not feeling well, Mike?
It's right there.
Betty? He actually isn't. He's got a head cold.
I'm sorry. So this was really good. Thank you, Johnny and Craig. I appreciate you guys coming and taking your evening to join us. I kind of had a couple of questions, and I'm not really sure originally if you, in your first part of the presentation, you talked about the things that we've done. Did you add in the water amenities that we added to the two smaller parks in Washington? We did it through a management grant?
No, we didn't. Both of those were replacement of existing, and we really were stressing here in this presentation, the addition of new facilities, frankly, because we can make a clearer case that if you add facilities, there is an expectation of being able to maintain them, whereas where we're rebuilding existing facilities, there's an expectation that we do have some level of funding to take care of the previous facility.
Okay.
We feel we're a little short on that, but we do have some funding. So we're trying to keep those issues separate in the presentation for clarity.
Okay. So then clarify for me how we, how you or the parks system deals with volunteers. You made a comment that volunteers tend to want to do what they want to do, not necessarily what you want to do. So I guess I would like to know, do you have somebody dedicated to the volunteer program? And is there a way, I think the volunteers and policing do a fabulous job with the automobiles, and I think that that's really a positive, so if you could just kind of elaborate on that for me a little bit?
I would just love to.
Thank you.
We get about 12,000 hours a year of volunteer time in parks, and volunteerism is an interesting critter. We have three full-time volunteer coordinators, and then we have one, what we'll call a, oh, I forget her title, but basically she works with the Parks Foundation and the larger groups that will bring in funding, or like the Rotary or Park Development Coordinator, I think is what we call it. And what we do, working with volunteers in parks is really not simple. It takes a lot of coordination because there is so many competing needs or competing requests for what people want to do. So if you're not very, very careful, what one group comes in and does, another group hates, or what one group comes in and does, they destroy what a group did before. And there's also a lot of permitting and land use that we have to accommodate, even if the work is done by volunteers. What the volunteer coordinator's jobs are, is to knock down all of those barriers to getting a project done. So we'll have people that'll come in and talk about what they want to do. As part of that process, we will talk to them about, can we steer you perhaps in a direction for you doing something that we have a larger need than perhaps what you came in? And we'll get that, you know, for instance, fraternity, sororities, there's different groups that'll come in and say, we just want a project. And those can be directed fairly easily. But you'll also have others come in, and I'll often give like neighborhood associations as an example, that they'll come in, and they usually have a pretty good idea in their mind what they want to do before they ever come talk to us. And we'll work with them and try to get the project done in such a way that doesn't increase maintenance costs, can lower them, but we try very hard to facilitate it. So it's a give and take. There are times that volunteers want to do things that we just have to decline that can be accomplished, but they're a great resource. The other thing that I would want to call out, volunteers, the value of volunteers is not just the dollar value. In fact, I'll say that it probably costs us at least half as much, maybe three-quarters of what it saves, using volunteers and straight staff costs. But what the real value of the volunteers is the neighborhood building, the ownership that the people get in the parks, the eyes and ears that we obtain from these volunteers of watching what's going on and talking to people, and the kid that might be doing some, being a kid vandalism that a neighbor sees and stops and talks to him, or calls us quickly to take care of something that we wouldn't have seen otherwise. So there's a whole lot of value in volunteerism that isn't, you know, mathematically addable on the screen.
Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation. I know that, I just kind of wanted to share what my thoughts were. It's very complicated, as all things are, and I understand about the facilities maintenance, but I'm just thinking about some of the neighborhood pocket parks that we have, and how, you know, when I've gone to neighborhood meetings, I hear people just say, well, can I take my lawnmower over and just mow the lawn myself, or can't us as a bunch of guys, you know, just take care of the park? And I don't, you know, know that answer. You know, I'm wondering if there was any way, and I don't know that it would be cost-effective, where people, you know, like can adopt a park and, you know, kind of not necessarily make any major changes to it, or like add fencing or bushes or tear out trees or anything, but just generally maintain it. Is that?
We do have adopt a park programs, and we do have cases where neighbors will come over and do specific maintenance, and we're quite open to having that happening, as long as they'll talk to us and we can coordinate it so that, again, we're not doing something, a neighbor who thinks they're doing a good thing goes into a natural area and cuts out all of the rare endangered species. Or volunteers, actual example, that puts in electrical wire and gets us in trouble with the state because they took out Bradshaw Lomation. The coordination needs to happen, but we're very interested in having the volunteers.
All righty. Thank you.
Okay. I've got Chris, and then George Brown, and then Mike, and then Alan. Chris?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you all for the hard work that you do. I mean, you're really doing a lot with not much, and this is an area that often winds up at the tail end, simply because of so many funding issues, especially this economy. I'm going to be playing with some round numbers, but help me, as I go along, to try to logic this out. If I recall correctly, in 2006, you brought us a proposal for a bond measure that was about 10 or 12 million maintenance upkeep and about 10 million acquisition. That, roughly, that's what I'm remembering. It was about $20 million, about half of which was upkeep and maintenance.
I don't remember the actual dollar figure, but I think your percentages are pretty good.
It was kind of in that general area. So you brought us a proposal that said we want about 10 million, give or take, to buy property, and about 10 million to do upkeep and maintenance, the stuff you were talking about up here. And that the city council chose not to follow your advice, and instead made the entire bond for acquisition. So we're now in the situation where we've got money in the bank to buy property, but no money to do the maintenance, because we didn't allow that, your advice, to go through in terms of how to spend that money. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, I want it really clear that this situation has not occurred because of a failure on your part. You have been diligent in bringing us your best recommendation in terms of what you thought we should do, and we chose to do something else. As a result, we're now in this situation where it's costing us probably in $2,010, probably more to do the job, and we're in a quandary. And then we've got money sitting in the bank that we can't spend. So I don't want to, I don't want to get in that situation again. I want to be able to take your advice when you give it, because it's thoughtful advice. And for, this is now the second time where I haven't taken city's advice, and I've learned to regret it, because you are very thoughtful about it. And I don't have a solution in terms of what to do, because I'm very conscious that we're in a very tough financial spot. We've gone through two budgets now where we've had to cut significant money. And we're choosing between, you know, parks, police, safety, you know where that goes, and that's not a pretty place to go to. So I'm just sorry we had to get to this place in the first place. And maybe it would not have been quite such a bad place if we had probably listened to you in the first place.
You'll understand if I decline to comment?
You don't have to say a word. Thank you very much.
It's a music to his ears, or whatever. George Brown.
Thank you. I've just got a few questions. On Attachment C, this index that you presented, I'm just curious where the cutoff points are for good, fair, and poor. I mean, good, it would be zero to, looks like maybe 20% or?
It's a question for Mike.
10, okay. Oh, yeah. Yeah, good. I figured that out. Zero to 10. And then 10 to what for fair?
10 to, trying to remember what it is.
30.
30, I believe.
I was guessing. Okay. And anything beyond that is poor?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. My second question is, that bond that Chris referred to was in '06, and it was 27 million, and there's 15 million left, and this is for new acquisition? Right, not for O and M? It has to be used for new acquisition?
In the 2006 bond, there wasn't anything in there that was renovation that I recall. What is left includes, I'll take that back, there is 2.5 million that's left for our part of replacement of the rugs, I call them rugs, the turf fields.
Oh, right, yeah.
For 4J on that first four fields. For 4J on that first four fields. So, we're holding 2.5 for that. And then there is 1.75 that is for match money for the Environmental Education Center. Of course, the economy has not allowed the private side the opportunity to do their fundraising as was anticipated. And then there might be something else I'm not recalling at the moment, but around 10 million is left for neighborhood and community park acquisition, land acquisition.
Okay. All right. So, we, when we met previously, and you kind of went over all this stuff with all the counselors individually, I asked you if any portion of that 10 million could be used to acquire Civic, the Civic Stadium property. Is there anything in the bond measure that would preclude that from, that would like forbid that from happening?
I think that that's really a legal question, and it would be around whether or not you could define the use of the Civic Stadium around a community park.
Right.
So, that's the category that the funding's in. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's a complicated, we were supposed to have discussed that September 13th, I think, last month, but it keeps disappearing from the agenda. We were supposed to already have our discussion about Civic Stadium, so it's too bad we couldn't maybe like combine it with this discussion, but, and I'm thinking maybe, maybe part of that money and maybe a land swap. I mean, I'm just racking my brains trying to figure out a good outcome. I just don't want to see that property crumble. But anyway, okay. My last question is, on this, the table here, it says 3.2 million dollar replacement value for Laurelwood. Is that like a assessment of the property value? I mean, like a rough idea of how much it's worth on the open market?
No, that's the current replacement value of the buildings.
It's the building, it's not the property itself.
Correct.
So, it'd be a lot more than that if included the property?
Quite a bit more, yes.
Yes, okay. Do you have any idea what it would be?
I don't.
Probably around $250,000 an acre.
Okay. Any idea how many acres it is, roughly?
I don't recall.
70?
We're supposed to have that.
Including, the park does not, and developed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. There's the back nine that's never developed. I think it's like 60, 70 acres.
How many?
60 or 70.
Oh, wow.
Big chunk of it's not developed.
I see. Okay.
80 for the whole thing.
We're in the ballpark at 70 or 80.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's, that's all.
But half of it's not developed.
Okay. Mike, you're next.
Thank you. I've got about three questions here. I'll try and go through them quickly. First of all, along with the 10 million from the '06 for acquisition that's remaining, I'm sure you'll understand, I want to ask, how much of that is set aside currently for the remaining portions yet to acquire for the Santa Clara Community Park?
It's amazing. That's the one I forgot. I think that there's around a million dollars for Santa Clara still on hold as we are trying to negotiate for that last 16 acre parcel that so far we've been unsuccessful in negotiating.
So, we have 24 to this point acquired?
Hmm, no. I think it's a little bit less than that. I don't remember the exact figures, and I might have it reversed, but.
We were just having that conversation earlier.
We have one, one parcel that's left, that's, we're looking at there by Madison. And with that, that will come close to the 40 acres.
Okay.
So, I might have the acreage a little bit wrong.
Okay. So, you think that between the balance remaining from the '98 bond and the '06 for acquisition, we have sufficient to, to acquire that remaining parcel for that community park?
I am quite confident we do where we sit now. The issue really is that we don't have a willing seller.
Right. But I'm just wondering about resources for the moment with our capacity to do it. I understand what you're saying. You know, there was also another thing that I think Neil was there for during a Santa Clara Community Organization meeting, and we're talking about a lot of graffiti in some of the neighborhood parks in Santa Clara area. And nearly everyone in the room was volunteering to want to clean that up and asking, I think at the time, "Hey, what do we do?" And I wasn't able to direct them to any sort of program that I was aware of, but I would highly encourage, I think there are a lot of community members who would volunteer for that sort of vandalism abatement or graffiti abatement in their park. Because it's, and it's an easy way to take ownership and maybe decrease some of your costs. I guess I would say, you know, we had a conversation before council here, the mayor and I, and Betty, when we have our pre-council meeting. One of the things that I said was, this is extremely important to people's quality of life, but I think we're going to face some questions in the next two or three years with what sort of funding level the county is going to have and not have, and what some other things that the city is going to face in the times we're in, where we're going to have to be pretty, pretty stark about our priorities. I would say, from, from my point of view, it's time for us to look at more than just how do we, how do we bridge the funding gap that exists at current funding levels. I would say it's also important for us to strategically look at, how do we decrease the cost for maintaining the same level of service? How do we find creative and new ways in order to address our, our need to make sure we're doing a good job maintaining our assets, but do it in a creative, new way that doesn't cost increasing amounts of money over time? And I know that, that's what everybody wants. But that's the hard job I think we're going to have to do. I think we're going to, I would be very interested in looking at some of our underused park assets and how we might transform those into more productive uses. For example, the back nine at Laurelwood is a quantity of land that I would think may be one example of many others where we could look at, are we making the best use of that asset right now? So, I would highly encourage creativity in more than just how do we get more money, but how do we do more with less? Thanks.
Okay. Alan, you're next.
First of all, thank you for getting a new clicker for the slide show.
We brought that one with us.
Oh, leave it here. I think we can get another one of those then. An excellent presentation, Johnny and staff. I'm always impressed by the quality of the staff that we have when we get presentations like this, and how in-depth we get, and how on top of everything you already are on top of. And I want to acknowledge through all the surveys that we do, and all the things that we get, and Eugene Counts and whatnot, that, that the parking recs always ends up really high as one of the things that citizens love about our city, and I do too. And it's, it's one of our key assets, one of our jewels that we need to maintain. And it's very impressive that we've added $53 million worth of stuff since '98, which is all great. But the reason I asked for this work session is twofold. One, because I see us, and this presentation just solidified that for me, heading down the same road maintenance path that we've been on, which is, we have this asset and we have no way to maintain it. And, and we keep going into this problem where they fall off into the rebuild the street or renovate the entire facility, which means almost rebuilding it. And it's five times more expensive to do that than it is to maintain it. So, we kind of chop off our nose to spite our face. And so, that's problem one. And then the second problem is that we're semi-rich in land, or monies to buy lands like the River Road Community Park. By the way, community park's defined by 40 acres for those people that were wondering what we're talking about.
Or 100.
I mean, the Santa Clara, right. And, and so, we, and we've got money to do land acquisitions, but we don't have a plan necessarily to get the funding to develop those things. So, we've got the maintenance and the development problems, which are the two reasons that I wanted to have this presentation. And so, if I've got this right, we've got about a $1.5 million O and M gap, operation maintenance gap, and about a $15 million capital renovation gap. Or what was that, can you bring back that slide?
Yes.
The bar chart one?
See how long that takes me to bring that back.
Like a fungus.
We're getting closer. That was the, can we get?
Oh, it's the one, one before now. Yeah, there it is. So, it's, so that's the $15 million in capital renovation.
Yeah, and.
But we get about an $15 million.
We need to be careful also to think about if, this is just the parks renovation side. If you look at the deferred backlog on the rec facilities and pools, that changes that 15 to, well, add another eight and a half. So, about 23.5.
23 million. So, we've got an ongoing maintenance problem for funding and a replacement renovation, keeping our capital assets up to par so that people will use them and like them. So, we've got this kind of, and, and what I wanted to come out of this was first recognize the problem and the magnitude of it, and the slippery slope that we're heading down. If we do nothing about this, it's going to get worse. And we can, we're, we're going to be in the position of cutting costs by shutting facilities down or just letting them fall apart. And so, my goal is to avoid that happening, and also to develop the parks in an appropriate way. And, and so, that takes, and what we need, that is a plan. We need to craft a plan to deal with those two issues.
Betty, you're next.
Thank you. First, I'd say all, all parks don't need to be developed. I, I agree we need to maintain the assets we have, the things that can disintegrate. As for the land acquisition, I was really glad that what we focused on was land acquisition because you can, there isn't any more land being made. And if we have the land in the future, we can do something with it, or it's, it's good to have it there. And I hope that we will spend the rest of that money to acquire crucial land, especially lands that affect the water supply, that have long, natural areas are really important. Have you divided the, the backlog between things that can be done sometime in the future and things that need to be done now? For example, if we don't mow the lawn, you could do that two years from now. It won't destroy, it won't destroy the ground. But if you don't water the trees and shrubs, then you have a more expense in the future. So, there are different kinds of things.
We've looked at, in different reduction scenarios and in what we've implemented the last few years, different ways of trying to keep the service as high as we could but still cut costs. And for example, on mowing the lawns, we've, we cut the mowing in our sports fields in half. There, in dealing with our park living infrastructure, which would be our shrubs, our grass, our trees, there's limits to what we can do in not maintaining the facility before some things, they go to seed, or they go wild, or they start causing other problems, or they overgrow, they encroach. So, there's some of that that we can do for delaying some of our vegetation custodial type activities. You're certainly correct. We learned the last time that not watering, particularly in the southeast area town, had consequences that we didn't expect because of the expansive soils. Soils dried out, they heaved, and we lost a lot of sidewalk and other hard infrastructure because of that. But we have been looking at how can we change the mode, decrease our maintenance frequencies, and still try to keep customer satisfaction? And that's where we find that as we're, the cuts that we're doing, the amount of complaint user dissatisfaction that we're having is increasing. Where exactly that line is for the different facilities or the different types of maintenance, I really don't know. I think it's going to be iterative with the community to find out what they're willing to accept. But if you're dealing with more of some of the hardscape or the things that we start to lose, that's, that's more of the deterioration curve, and there's things that we have to do within a certain frequency, or it just carries on down the line.
So, any way you look at it, we need more money, right?
We, we need to figure out either how we're going to maintain those things we have, or consciously make a decision that some things, value that we currently have, we're willing to give up because we can't.
So, to maintain the, the current level or actually to fill the backlog, yes. You know, ultimately, there is going to have to be a, a greater resource pool in order to keep the infrastructure on the high part of the curve.
I think we could defer purchasing playground equipment, for example. But if you have playground equipment that's becoming dangerous, you have to do something.
One of the things that, well, if I just weigh in a little bit, one of the things, just to kind of hearken back a little bit that we've talked about in the budget is, it's, again, it's a little bit about that one-time versus ongoing money. Mowing the lawns and watering the lawns, ongoing money, capital is one-time. So, there are some things we can defer, like playground equipment, which will give you one-time money, but it won't solve the ongoing funding gap. So, there's still that part of that discussion.
I'm thinking you aren't purchasing more things that have to be maintained at the same time that you can't maintain what we have perhaps. But I continue to think that we need new sources of revenue, and I hope that we will have a work session about additional ways we can raise money at some point. I've been hoping that for 12 years, but. And I think that a levy is possible. I think the idea of, because people do value the parks, and I also think that adopt-a-park is, which I think Mike suggested and some other people, I think that's an idea that might appeal to people, especially people who don't have lawns of their own to care for, might really enjoy going out and working in the outdoors. Thank you.
Could they come to my house before they go?
I was going to say.
I was hoping my house would be declared a park.
My son will work cheap, I think.
So, the one thing that I wanted to say is that I, I don't believe that you can take care of basic funding for programs with volunteers or charitable contributions. I think you need your basic funding, and then you can add to that. And we are really valued, I mean, we provide, a lot of what we provide because we already have an enormous amount of volunteer help in our, in our city, but I don't think we can depend on it for doing the basic work of the ongoing work of the city. So, there is, there is a distinction. But I also think that maybe we need to ramp up in terms of adding on to what we have and adding to our capacity. I think maybe we need to ramp up the conversation about adopt-a-park and, and talk to the community about maybe stepping up and helping with some of those, those things. We might have a Love Your Park Day where people really come out and, and give it a big kick once a year to, to really help with our, with our parks. And the, I sent a note to the city manager about this, but the business school, the new dean of the business school at the university is really interested in doing some big signature event every year with all of their business students, and, and something that leaves a lasting mark on the community, and to do it every year. And so, I, he's asking me for ideas. So, I'm putting it out to you guys. If you, they, you know, you, they would bring in other people in the community to support that, and other machinery or whatever's needed to support that, but they're looking for something that they could go all over town and make a difference. So, just want to put that out to you to think about in this, in terms of meeting some of our, some of our basic, basic needs, that, that they're looking for something to do, and, and if we can find just the right thing that they can do that can really make a, a difference, that they can show that they've made a difference, maybe we can figure something out with that. I've got a second round. I've got Alan and then Mike. Alan?
So, Councilor Taylor makes a good point that there's, there's a difference between park lands and natural areas. Maybe you can describe those, and, and what we're talking about is mostly the parks and rec facilities, right?
In this presentation, we're talking about both. And if you recall, I had a slide, but we also included it in attachment A. Of the new assets added, we also added 770 acres of natural area primarily along the Ridgeline Trail. So, we certainly, if you look at our acreage, just straight acreage, we have far more acres of natural area than we have developed park, but that's kind of the nature of having natural areas. The developed parks are far more expensive to maintain than maintaining the natural areas. So, if you look at our needs, we have needs in both areas, but the majority of the funding, both for ongoing and for deferred maintenance, is in the developed park system.
Right. And so, natural areas are, don't. And so natural areas aren't free. They have a cost associated. And what's that in relation to parks? Is it like a five to...I mean, you did numbers last at the budget committee, it was like $1,600 an acre for...remember those numbers?
Do you remember those numbers?
Well, I think of the one point...one of the slides we used a little before here. Oh, the $1.5 million.
It's the one after.
I think $500,000.
After that.
Of the $1.5 million O&amp;M gap that Johnny described, I think about...that's not split out there, but I think approximately $450,000 to $500,000 of that is probably for natural areas and the remainder is for developed parks.
Yeah, in the slide that's up on the annual, you can see that our need is 5.5 for developed parks, $800,000 for natural areas. But our acreage as such is the natural area is far, far exceeds what our developed park acreage is.
Yeah, right.
We can get you those figures. I just didn't bring them with me.
Right. Right. So, and I agree that not all areas need to be developed. That's why we have natural areas and open spaces. And so one of the other things that I would like to see us do is, I think the motion that's suggested is fine as far as it goes, although it only covers half of the problem, which...and the motion's talking about basically the O&amp;M maintenance problem. But I would also like to see us develop a plan for funding options for the council to consider, like within the next six months to a year, to meet the capital and recreation facilities renovation backlog that we have. Because as with the street fund, we have the backlog of streets and we have the maintenance costs, and we need to deal with both of them simultaneously. If you don't deal with both of them, we end up in the same place we are with streets, which is scrambling to just meet the basic needs. So if it's not a friendly amendment, I'll propose an addition to the suggested motion, which also asks for a plan to meet the capital and recreational facilities renovation backlog, which is about $23 million. So we need two plans, or part A and part B of the same plan.
All right. Mike?
I agree with much of what Alan has said, and I agree that this is a two-part issue. But for me, as I mentioned earlier, this goes a little bit farther than just how do we get more money? I think we have to be talking about how we do business differently as well. I was pleased that after a great conversation about it, the city manager, a year and a half, two ago or some such thing, gave me a book. I think it was for my birthday. It was called Innovation Nation, which is a great book. And I was really pleased to see him have that way of thinking when he first began in this position. I think that's what's needed here as well. I'd like us to be addressing more than just how do we get more money, but how do we do business differently as well in this plan? I think that making sure that we're maintaining the cost of maintenance is more than just how do we get more money to do it, but how do we do it in a more economical way? And the language in this motion doesn't quite cover that for me, so I would probably have some manner of friendly as well to address that. And specifically, I mean, we can look at all different kinds of examples of things that we've done innovatively and differently in this community that have really been successful. Neighborhood matching grants is one of the key examples for me. Now, there's a way to build community, to have it cost less, to let volunteers do things and to build things that we're proud of, from art scapes and streets in some parts of town to, excuse me, the restoration of Spring Creek in Santa Clara and all of the thousands of hours that have gone into that with volunteer help. I think we need to be using that kind of thinking in how we address this problem beyond just how do we get more money to do it, so.
Andrea?
Oh, ready? Okay. So I'm looking at this and I'm listening to the conversation, and I really hear what people are saying, but what I'm...in my mind's eye, you know, I can't even think about putting a bond out for this year or next year. You know, I can't...I just can't go there. And when I think about the work that needs to be done on some of these buildings, and I'll just kind of go out on a limb here, Kaufman Center, I don't know what contract agreements that we have with that, but it's valued at 2.69...no, its replacement value is 2.69 million or something like that, 2 million, almost 3 million. And yet, and it'll cost us 1.5 to fix it. And so like, is there any way that we could think about selling it to who...if somebody would buy it for a million less and let them do the work? I mean, I don't know what the contracts are, but that's the kind of thing. And then I heard about, you know, the back nine that I hear at the Laurelwood Center. I mean, I don't want to sell everything, but you know, it's like, okay, is that something that's developable? $225,000 an acre. How...could we sell those and fix the building there? I mean, that would cover...I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I want to hear about because I think that people are looking at us and are saying, "You gotta be kidding me. You're gonna ask me for more money?" You know, and yet, you know, like people out in Mike's part of Santa Clara and my part, you know, we haven't really fulfilled the agreement to them already that we've promised them twice. And so, you know, and as far as the stadium goes, I'll just stop there.
Okay, Alan?
I think I got the language on.
Well, the back nine at Laurelwood is, I think, for most people in that part of the city, considered a natural area now. It's been 80 years and it's never been developed and it's likely not to be. So if we're gonna look at natural areas to sell off to make money, I want to look at all of the natural areas that we purchased over the...since the city began and put them all on the chopping block and see which ones make the most sense to, not just pick one. So let's...if I don't really want to go down that road, but if we're going to, that's the way I would like to do it. I think to help with your issue, Mike, about looking at different ways of doing business, I think is a good idea and looking at different ways of making our costs go. I think if you just delete the word "funding" from the proposed motion and add some language around mine, it just says "options" for creating sustainable.
I got some other language here that might work.
And while I agree with all that stuff, I think that slide's very telling in how much you can expect to get out of volunteers. I think the mayor's right. These are basic things and we're not gonna maintain them by doing a lot of volunteer stuff. If we did a 600% increase in the amount of volunteers that we had, which has a whole multitude of different issues surrounding it, we could potentially cover the gap if we had enough resources to get 600% more volunteer resources. So I think it's probably around 1,000% increase because we'd have to cover the cost of dealing with all of that stuff. So that's not very realistic. It's a way of closing the gap, nor is just doing things differently in terms of being cheaper about doing them. We can't maintain roads much cheaper than we maintain roads and we can't maintain parks much cheaper than I think we maintain parks. I think there's things we can do with volunteers and Adopt a Park that might make sense, but it's not gonna cover the gap.
That's right.
We're still stuck, and I don't want us to end up like we were in the street funds where we end up 10, 15 years later going, "How did we get here? Oh, my God." And now we've got this giant hole and deal with. And as far as the stadium, I love the stadium, but the problem has been for 4J and would be for us is, how do you maintain it? I mean, we're in a hole right now and adding more to it is digging deeper in the hole. And one of the first adages I learned a long time ago was, "When you're in a hole, stop digging." And I'm not sure I want to take on more maintenance problems, especially the size of what Civic Stadium requires, although I love that stadium. So I'm curious what you come up with as a measure. It handles both things and I support what you were talking about earlier.
But you in just a second. I guess I would say that in terms of assets that we have, most of them probably don't make sense for being on a chopping block because they probably have too much value to us if we can do anything to keep them. But some of them may make sense in some way to divest ourselves of. And if we did that, then I would say, maybe think about how do you reinvest that and try to grow it as an ongoing fund to help deal with the issue. So you're not...it's just not a one-time thing, but it's something that you're trying to turn into something over time to allow for more investment in taking care of the rest of our things. I don't know what that is. I'm sure somebody's...yeah, and I'm sure somebody's got a thing for everything, but if we looked at it really sincerely, we might see some things out there that we could reasonably say, "Well, maybe we don't have to own that." And we should be willing to look at that. So I'm not sure it applies evenly to everything, but I...
We can look at all.
Yep, we can look at all of them and make some kind of...see if there's anything that seems like can give us a little bit of leverage to start investing in the future of everything that we do want to keep. Chris?
I'd just say, don't close any of the recreation facilities, pools, or community centers in southwest Eugene.
Or the one in north Eugene.
Or anybody else's ward, sorry. Yeah, don't do anything in anybody's ward.
Yeah.
Don't you have to have one first?
That's right.
Oh, doggone it, I forgot that part.
Your issue, Alan, was about restoration and maintenance, right?
O&amp;M and capital. Options for capital and recreation.
Right. Okay, let me see if I got something added to two parts of this that'll work. I move to request the city manager to develop funding options and innovative new methods for city council consideration for the FY12 budget to sustainably maintain and restore current park recreation and open space facilities.
Was the store getting...it's actually to do renovate. It's the renovation dollars, right? Does that better work?
You know, there's still cap...it's really...what you're looking for is the whole suite.
Yes.
Yeah.
What you're looking for.
Budget to sustainably maintain and renovate.
And restoration, renovation.
Right.
Have the whole suite of...
Does this language get you there? What'd you say?
I changed it to renovation rather than sustainably.
I thought you were gonna say the whole suite.
Maintain.
The whole suite.
And renovate.
Everybody knew what he was talking about when he said that.
Yeah, as long as we have some new ideas in there, too.
Could you take out the word "new," please?
New?
Okay.
New innovation.
If that's a friendly, I'll be...
New innovation.
Because it's redundant.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, English teacher. Yes, we have. Happy as a friendly.
You want to try that again?
You want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
Move to request the city manager to develop funding options and innovative methods for city council consideration for the FY12 budget to sustainably maintain and renovate current park recreation and open space facilities.
Second. Move in seconds. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you, city manager.
Just one quick thing, and Johnny can weigh in. We're not talking about the new development of things. We're talking about our current...
The current.
Right.
Keep moving that forward. You're never...
Just a little quick anecdotal story. About six, eight years ago...no, that would have been a little longer than that. We went in an exercise to find parkland that we could liquidate. And we found a parcel that we didn't think had much use. It was just two house lots that was in the Bethel area. And so we put it on the block, took it to council, got a little bit of support. The neighborhood came unglued, and it's interestingly enough that soon after that, we developed Gilbert Park.
So you never know what's gonna happen, do you?
So if you want a park developed, we should...
Alan, you have...
Just cautioning that liquidating parks, and there are some things out there that from a particular perspective could make some sense. But it's incredibly controversial. To be...just be aware before you go there, it's incredibly controversial.
Right. If you want to see how controversial...try to get rid of that back nine and you'll see it come out of the woodwork in half a nanosecond. But to clarify what you...and I would support them.
Is there somebody else's property that's near here?
To clarify what you just said, John, which is, we're not dealing with the new stuff. By that, you mean that all the stuff that we've acquired, we have plans to build out, we're not even talking about that. We're just biting off, how do we keep what we've got maintained and renovated properly? Right? And so, and all that new stuff is all...the land acquisitions that we've had for building out new community centers and regional parks, and we don't have any money for that.
With the caveat that...
Some of that's already on.
The caveat is, there's a certain level of maintenance that happens with every piece of property you have.
Right, right, yeah. Everything...there's no such thing as a free piece of property. We have to maintain all of it, regardless of where it is.
And the funds that we have set aside for... Yeah.
Those are clear.
The only thing I would say about the ongoing maintenance issue, minimizing the maintenance issue, is when you're the city, you have a certain responsibility for how you deal with your stuff when you're asking everybody else how to deal with their stuff. So I mean, so you can't be the bad actor in the neighborhood.
That's right.
Gotta practice what you preach. Walk the walk.
The answer is chickens.
It's a little embarrassing when we don't meet our own vegetation codes.
That's exactly right. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's more guys. Thank you. Thanks, John.